I will go to our first information item, or our only information item for tonight, the Reimagine Learning Plan 2020 to 2021 update. Dr. Swift?
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees. We've been in repeated updates on July 29th, on August 12th, actually on July 22nd, on July 29th, on August 12th, and then again tonight on August 19th. So I do want to reference that we have not included everything again tonight in this update. We've abbreviated a little bit, but I do want to reference right away on slide two. If folks are joining us this evening for the first time in a while, I just want to point folks toward the Reimagine Learning Plan and those prior updates from July 29th and August 12th. This will be the first Wednesday night that we're not actually reviewing the entire plan. But a lot has happened over this previous week, and we wanted to share just a few updates, significant updates from legislative action and from work going on in the district and progress that we've made on our plan. First of all, we are still on our mission, every child, every day. Tonight, we'll look at really three parts to update and clarify the Reimagine Plan. Thank you, Ms. Losensky. And Ms. Bacalor will step in. And I do understand that folks have a lot on their minds, and it's August, and there's so much to think about. But Ms. Bacalor needs to remind us all of the importance of our immunizations. So she'll be stepping in to offer some remarks there. And then we'll end, trustees, with next steps. We are just three weeks away, three weeks less, one day, away from opening day in the district. So we have a lot of work to do and a lot on our mind. The Reimagine Learning Plan, trustees, the entire plan was submitted to the state Monday evening, Monday afternoon. That plan is posted both on Board Docs and on our website. It is 251 pages. And the goal of these weekly updates at the Board is really to pull out the outward-facing information that our parents and our students and our community really need to know. So that's our goal. We are working all the way through this with five priorities. Our health and safety comes first, providing a quality educational experience, ensuring support and connections. And we really see the extending of supports as being one of the most important parts of the work we'll do this year. We are founded in social justice, in anti-racism commitment, and I'm looking forward to sharing more about that work over the coming days, trustees. And we are focused on the full year. So that is a part of our thinking, that it was not our goal to have students have to have many disruptions to this year. We know the importance of establishing rhythm and routine. And so we are looking at getting the most days that we can out of the year. We'll look at, remind ourselves of the Equity Plan, that we really are thinking about systems, about leadership, about culture, about our school and classroom practices, and about family and community empowerment. These areas are just a few of the highlights of our work this week. Trustees, as you know, we closed the parent selection last Friday. We actually had it open through Sunday and Sunday night, received an update from K-12 Insight as to where we are with parent selections. Trustees, where about 80% of our emails sent out were responded to with a selection. And of course, we'll be talking to every set of parents. So if parents miss that window, no worry, we'll be reaching out. I have some updates this evening on our progress with technology and connectivity. We know that's the new paper and pencil for virtual learning. And then, as we shared, Ms. Bacalor has an immunization update. Trustees, one desire from our parents, of course, is to actually see a more firm, daily student schedule. We do have those ready this evening. Trustees, as you know, there was a legislative session both on Saturday and on Monday. And so we did get that seat time waiver that allows us to provide more flexibility with the school day. So we'll be sharing more of that this evening as well. Trustees, you're well reading our food endeavor. You've received regular updates since mid-March. But Ms. Losensky is going to go one more slide. And just a reminder, this past week, I've been engaged with superintendents from across the country. We remain very concerned that we have not yet received the waiver to continue our emergency feeding that we've been able to do since March. This allows us to do the drive-through distribution. We don't have to take ID or do things through a system. We are able to just simply serve our children in communities. I do want to back up one, Ms. Losensky. I almost missed. I just want to point out that we do have the late afternoon drive-through at Pioneer still going, and that also we will be extending the summer feeding. And on the week, of the first week of September, that distribution is on Thursday due to the Labor Day weekend. So we're putting that out on social media. But trustees, if you're able to help us get that word out, it is a Thursday distribution on the weekend before Labor Day. Ms. Bacalor is going to step in with us now to touch on, you know, with folks being so busy, and also, a lot of folks really not getting to their errands and outings because they're trying to keep us all safe and control the spread. We are concerned, not only in Ann Arbor, but across the country, with the state of our immunization. And so Ms. Bacalor is going to step in. The district is doing a number of things, and we'll be coordinating events and sharing that out with our parents, because we want to make sure that we're having a healthy and safe year. And immunizations are key and critical to doing that. Ms. Bacalor.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Swift. Glad to be back with you again tonight. As Dr. Swift mentioned, it is that time of year for our back-to-school immunizations. And we know that during the pandemic, a lot of parents just naturally put off some of the Well Child and other appointments that they would normally have. So really, we're encouraging people. It's National Immunization Month, and we're really encouraging families to make those appointments with their pediatrician or their primary care provider and get in and catch up on any vaccinations that their children need. Even though we're starting the school year virtually, students who are entering young fives in kindergarten and seventh graders, and any students who are new to the district, still have to show that proof of immunization status when they enroll. So that's an important thing to remember. And you may recall, it seems like 10 years ago, but it was just last year in 2019, there were significant measles outbreaks throughout the United States, including here in Michigan. And if we have low rates of things, like kids immunized with the MMR vaccine or with pertussis, for example, we're sort of even more vulnerable if a case comes into our community of measles or pertussis. We're even more vulnerable to having our own little outbreak. So we have to, we have to just press ahead with our regular immunizations. There are resources for free or reduced-cost vaccinations. And our wonderful partners from U of M, the U of M Regional Alliance for Healthy Schools, is actually, right now, available to our district families and any children in the community who need to be immunized. You can see on the side, people just need to call for an appointment. And then, they also have interpreter services for whatever language families may speak. And besides RAS, there are also other resources available in the community, such as the Washtenaw County Health Department, and places like Packard Health, where families can go and get their children immunized. We know that vaccines are essential for protecting child, children and family members. So we're really encouraging people to make those appointments and get their kids in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bacalor. Next, we wanted to update technology. You know, lots of buzz out in the community. I wanted to just share with folks kind of where we are in the process. We appreciate the support of our stakeholders and taxpayers, because we were able to make a key and critical purchase out of our technology bond money that was designated specifically for this kind of purchase, $4.1 million. Trustees, our ITD team has been very busy alongside Dr. Heather Kelstrom. And I just wanted you to know, they're currently processing 5,000 devices. These are our prior-owned devices. So they need a little bit of work. They're updating the operating system, the software applications, they're repairing them, they're cleaning them. Secondly, they are processing 13,000 brand-new devices. These have to get a label and be entered into our inventory tracking system, and they get cases put on to them. I understand they're waiting any minute now for the case shipment arrival, and then those 13,000 devices will be ready to go. We are designing processes. The schools are working these now for pickup and drop-off during that week of August 31st. So we just want our families to understand that coming through the drive-through at your school, you might at one stop leave off the device that you used last year, give that back, turn that in, and then down the drive just a little way, you would then pick up the package for this year. Those new devices and devices that have been refurbished will be fully loaded and customized for grade level, trustees, following, dependent upon your support this evening. We are excited that they will be loaded with academic reading materials and with the Sora library materials as well. We're doing a lot of work on connectivity, and I wanted to bring you this update this evening, because we're getting a lot of emails, and we want families to know the efforts that are underway to ensure not only that every child has a device, but also that every child and family are able to access and have enough connectivity. Trustees, you know I'm not the Technology Director, and we do have her available by phone this evening. So if we need to, we can call on Dr. Kelstrom. They are purchasing, and I'll be talking to the trustees more about this, the KJ, which is the hotspot devices, that's the brand name. And those actually have the filtering built into them, so they're, make the use of the Internet safe and compliant, just as we always want to do. We're in the process of working through an Essentials sponsorship agreement with Comcast, and this would allow us to offer a toll-free number for parents who may be in need of reliable Internet. It would allow us to get that deal for parents of $9.95 a month for Internet-only services. And trustees, it would allow us to pay that $9.95 for parents for whom that is a challenge. So that's an exciting update. I don't know a lot yet, but as we know more, I'll update you. We'll also continue to use a small number of hotspots through our Verizon contract. And trustees, you know there's some areas of the city that are literally Internet deserts, just little patches. And I think even the trustees are familiar with some of these, where you can't get Internet very well. We are going to use the hotspots. That does help with Internet connectivity. I'm especially excited about another area of our Wi-Fi enhancement. And that is that just today, Dr. Kelstrom moved forward with outfitting our first bus with the appropriate equipment to push out Wi-Fi. Buses, when they're in this mode, will need electrical, so they'll be required to be parked somewhere where that can be connected. But we have our first bus, and trustees, if that goes well, I'll be sharing with you and asking for your support to do a number of buses out into neighborhoods in areas where connectivity is a challenge. And those challenges come in a number of ways, as you know. We are going to be, we continue to work with our community centers, who are setting up those safe spaces for students to gather and have their school day or have a part of their school day to access their virtual learning. And Dr. Kelstrom is working with those locations and supporting them if they need additional Wi-Fi or connectivity. One of those ways is school in a bag, their little Wi-Fi kits that can be used and help to provide a lot more connectivity. Trustees, while you were on your Saturday and your Monday, and I know you all are busy, our legislature was busy, so here we are. This is a very quick kind of highlights update. I know that you're looking forward to a more in-depth update, which we will do as we sort out what all is in, the detail of what's in the legislation. The first item was something that we very much needed, and I just want to publicly state my gratitude to the legislature and to the governor for her leadership. It is a seat time waiver that provides the flexibility that we need in order to work with our families. And we are required to demonstrate how we will cover all of the standard within our number of school days and the number of hours of school that we're offering. Trustees, as you will see on the daily schedule, we are keeping middle and high school pretty close to their 1098 hours. They are having full school days, although they are not on the Internet, they're not on the screen through that entire time. I want to be clear on that. But we are offering some flexibility with that elementary day. We're hearing from quite a number of parents who really need some flexibility in order to get their own work done and to keep their jobs. And we absolutely understand and want to support that. So we'll talk about that more in just a moment. Trustees, I'm very grateful as well for the decision on the student count for 2021. It will be 75% based in last year and 25% based in this year. There is complexity to that. Ms. Nick has studied it and can speak to it. But in my brief intro this evening, I will just share that this does protect districts from what by every count may be a loss in enrollment. And we're very grateful for that. It does provide some stability in those per pupil counts. We are going to be required to do a benchmark assessment two times during this school year. Very frankly, I do want to say that having to do the first one within the first nine weeks of school is a hardship. And trustees, just know that Ms. Linden is already working with her team on that. But I do want to state that that is quite a hardship to be able to pull that together within the first nine weeks of school. I wish that it had been within the first quarter, just to provide a little more flexibility in order to get that right. Our monthly updates, trustees, on the plan are required to be delivered in public to the Board, and that these meetings would include public commentary. Trustees, I'm so grateful, because you've received not monthly updates, but a minimum of two or three times a month updates. You've been receiving those since March, and I thank you for your flexibility and your willingness to have ongoing and constant updates. In addition to those updates in public, you receive daily updates from me, and you're all very, very good about those. The final thing, and I hesitate to mention this after the team has lost so much time over previous weeks working on the 251-page plan that was submitted on Monday. But we do have direction to submit an additional plan. To be very frank, I do not know the details of that yet. We are learning more every day. And trustees, as you know, we will rise, because we appreciate the opportunity to show all the work that we're doing. And we'll get that plan put together and shared with you over the coming weeks. We do continue to hold concerns. I won't gloss over it, our speaker, I appreciated this evening. But we do see our numbers, trustees, you saw the six areas that we look at, the metrics that we follow. We are concerned about a rising percentage and a rising number of cases among teens and individuals up to 30 years of age. This is true in the public reporting. And trustees, it is also true in our experience, in our activities in and around our schools right now. So we continue to have that concern, and we continue to monitor those situations. These are the areas of data that we look at. So we're very clear about our metrics, is the risk level in the region, the number of cases in Michigan, the number of cases in Washtenaw County, the number of cases in the Detroit region, that is, the region the governor has placed us into Region 1. We also, as we shared, and there's a very clear and articulate slide from last week's health update, we also are looking at the number of outbreaks in the region. And we are looking specifically at the number of cases involving young people, 0 to 20 years of age. So those are the areas that we are looking at. As we approach this 2021 school year, we are on a path to go through three stages, if we are fortunate to get this virus under control where we can. We are beginning the year fully virtual. We have clearly articulated plans for cohorts A and B on a hybrid model. And then, at some point, when we're able to, we look forward to the day when we can resume full operations. Some folks have asked, well, what will that look like? Here's the staging of our transition. We think of it as a massive transition, is we would begin with the youngest students, and with those students who are willing, from among students and families who are most in need of in-person learning. So that would be the first stage. Stage two would involve upper elementary. And then, stage three, we would begin to transition secondary students. So what Ms. Bacalor has been clear about is that if we can see improvement in the metrics on the prior slide, and see that improvement sustained, we achieved it back in May for a few weeks, and then, starting right away, the 1st of June, through the end of July, we've seen uptick in those metrics. So if we can see a sustained low level among those metrics, we would begin the transition. The CDC guidance is on the next slide. Just a reminder, the CDC says the lowest risk is virtual classes. More risk is those smaller classes, and then, the highest risk is full-size classrooms. We have two dates. We have a lot of dates on our fall calendar, two key and critical dates coming up. August 31st will be that week of picking up supplies and materials and technology, and getting everything together that is needed for opening school. And then, we're excited on September 8th to see all of our students in their virtual classrooms and schools across the district. We have offered three choices for our students and trustees. You've seen these at great, at great detail over time. A2 Student Link and A2 Classroom Connect are really the same program and the same delivery. The distinction between those choices is really to help us plan. So A2 Student Link parents are those parents who say, we are not planning to return before the end of the semester, and perhaps not before the end of the year. Classroom Connect, parents who chose that option are saying, we would like to return, and likely, we will return when the data has improved and the district opens for transition. A2 Virtual is really the option that's very different from the other two. And this is an independent virtual learning, where students have a teacher who helps them and gives them feedback, but they're not in synchronous classes every day. Trustees, you know that we closed our selection. I just wanted to share with you, you've seen the updates, but we had about 80% of parents who responded and chose a program. Of that 80%, about 80% of those chose our Classroom Connect. About 17% chose the same delivery, but indicated they won't consider returning before the end of the semester. And then, about 6% of our students chose the more independent option. Please know, we want to reassure all of our parents. If you've been thinking more about your selection, and you'd like to make a different choice, or for those parents who maybe didn't see the email or didn't get around to responding, our principals and school teams are working valiantly right now to get to every parent. So we will be in touch to make sure that our parents and our students get in a schedule, and they're ready for September 8th with the choice that fits our students and parents. This is, these are a couple of clarifications. One is that our principals, now that we've completed the selection window, our principals are currently busy, busy scheduling. At middle school and high school, those counselors and principals are working long hours to get the scheduling done, and keeping in mind the selection that parents have made. It is possible, now that we've seen our numbers, that some of our elementaries may do some blending of the Student Link and the Classroom Connect. But I do want to reiterate that parents will be able, and students will remain in fully virtual learning throughout as long as the full school year. So we're going to meet the needs of parents. We knew that our parents valued being attached to their local school, that that was a top value we were hearing. value we were hearing. So being attached to our local school may mean just a little bit of blending there at some elementary schools. Principals will be reaching out. Our goal has always been to meet our parents and our students right where they are and to do everything we can to meet their needs. So I want to reassure that we are working hard to do that. Our A2 Virtual, trustees, you have this in second briefing this evening. I just wanted you to see the numbers. They're a little bit shocking, and we're checking them now by checking in with parents, just to make sure that this was their firm choice. But these are the parents who've reached out to us, and I want to reassure those parents that you will be receiving a detailed email this week with the exact next steps for A2 Virtual. A2 Virtual will have materials pickup the week of August 31st, just like all of our other students. So you'll be getting that email this week that tells you what the next steps are. Trustees, you can see at elementary, at middle, and at high school, it's about 1,000 students, give or take. And then the number who said, that's not our primary selection, but we'd like to take one or two classes on A2 Virtual, trustees, 3,543 students. So a wild response on that, a strong response, and we're very grateful. Our principals, A2 Virtual principals are literally working around the clock, and we're so excited, trustees, when you support this evening. We're so excited to expand this program that has been very successful at high school. We'll be expanding it to accommodate these 635 or so students at elementary and middle school. Probably the number one asked question right now is, how do we set up our day? And I know many parents are working with neighborhood groups, or they might be working with the daycare provider. So we want to be clear about the daily schedules. These are sample schedules, and these are our virtual schedules, our virtual daily schedules. We're not yet addressing, because we know when we go back on a hybrid, we will have the limitations of transportation and other things. So these are our virtual daily schedules. That elementary schedule, from 8:10 to 2:58. I do want to note two important things. Number one, students are not on their laptop or their Chromebook or their iPad this entire time. Please know that just like in class, the teacher will have their lesson, and then they'll break out into activities or small groups, or they'll break out into an assignment, or they may take a break. Students may go get a bike ride in, or get a walk-in, or other activity. But these are generally the times in the day of 48-minute lunch and recess there in the middle of the day, and running the day, the book ends from 8:10 to 2:58. I do want to note, and again, we appreciate the vote of the legislature on Monday, because we are able now to offer the flexible approach for parents of elementary students who've said, we really need more flexibility in order to make everything work in our household. And so all of the core academics will be completed by about 1:20, 1:18 each day. Now, we absolutely hope that those who can will stay with us through 2:58, because we have another special hour in there, and our children love their specials, and we love our specials teachers. And we also have a number of academic enrichment and extra supports. We have a lot going on in the afternoons, but we also have heard from our parents, and we're adjusting as we go, that need for parents of younger students to break away, flex a bit during the day. Learning sample schedule at middle school runs from 8:20 to 3:08, and you can see, again, that this is a combination. The rhythm of the day will be in and out of the screen. There will be activities, there will be small group and large group activities, there will be assignments, there will be tutoring, there will be push-in support for delivery of special needs services, English language learner services. So this school day will work very similarly to the way it does in the classroom, in that activities are moving in and out, there are breaks during the day. It is not a solid, long day. Moving to high school, it is an 8:30 to 3:20 day, and then we are offering, all across the district by popular demand, that seventh-period option for every high school student. Some students really want that. They want to get some courses out of the way. Other students are not interested in this extra hour, but we do offer that. The school day, though, is 8:30 to 3:20. I do want to note that that staggered start was also in response to what we heard from parents. So 8:10 for the youngest child, 8:20 for the middle-level child, and 8:30 for the high school child. Does attend to the science of having older students begin their day a little later, but more importantly, not more importantly, forgive me, but also importantly for many of our parents, was that desire to have the older child help the younger child get started in the morning on their virtual learning. So it is staggered by about 10 minutes there to help everyone get a good start on their day. Wednesday, trustees, you remember, is more of an asynchronous day. We'll be doing lots of clubs and activities and special events, and Reckon Ed has free programming on Wednesdays and Saturdays. So we invite you to visit A2ReckonedEd.org to see more about that. So this has been a big question, trustees, and we'll be double-checking the accuracy of all of these components and getting these posted to the website, out on email and social media here in the next day or so, because we've heard a lot about this need. The next set of slides, we won't stop on much, but just pointing out that we have a plan in place for students with special needs documented in IEP and/or a 504. Trustees, we are looking to publish, we don't want folks having to plow through the weight of that 252-page plan. So we are in the process of publishing a separate and specific plan for how we will provide specialized supports to our students. I know Ms. Linden is connecting tomorrow with our APAC exec board. They have that on their calendar, and I always appreciate the leadership of the members of that board. So we are getting a date for a public session, and we'll be publishing a very straightforward plan that's dedicated especially to the concerns of parents and students of special needs. Very simple questions, though. Will the services be provided, trustees? The services will be provided in a synchronous, and in some cases, some support asynchronously also. Those services will look just like they do in the regular school day, for the most part, in that those special providers and supporters will weave in and out of the school, of the child's school day, and they will provide the needed support. So more details coming on this, and we will be working not only in a public session, but members of our SISs team will be working on a case-by-case basis, because we know sometimes the questions that parents have are very specific to the needs of their child. We are continuing with our work on Connections Plus groups, working with our community centers to get that going, accelerated learning, and then I'm really proud of our Music Performing Arts Project, Lead the Way, World Languages. Trustees, the, our teachers are already being tremendously creative to ensure that our students are engaged, that they're enjoying their school day. Trustees, we never say that this is our first-choice plan, but we do believe, based on the current data, that this is our best plan with the circumstances of the COVID pandemic as they currently are. I want to talk about our next steps. We will continue to clarify and communicate and respond to every question that's coming in. We are responding both in writing and through video format, but we are also, trustees, at this point, many of the questions are at the level of detail that they will be responded to by your principal and/or a member of your school team. We will continue to post our regular updated information at A2schools.org. It's under the tab Reimagine Plan. We will be posting these daily schedules tomorrow and making sure that folks have the sample schedule. School-specific communication is coming out. A2 Virtual-specific communication is forthcoming, and we will continue to have as our theme, that we will be meeting parents where they are, and in particular, a special session coming up for parents of students with special needs. In the meantime, we know our individual and collective responsibility to any time we're outside of our home family unit. We know we must wear a mask, we must watch our distance, and we must wash our hands. Trustees, as you know, we've been busy over these days getting ready. Every day that passes, we're closer to September 8th, and having our students back with us in a virtual environment, we have missed them so very much since Friday, March 13th, and we will see them on a virtual environment. Trustees, I had the opportunity this week to be in Schoology and Universal Design Learning Training, with teachers conducting that training for 106 of us, instructional leaders and building principals, assistant principals, and lots of folks on the team yesterday. I'm proud to share, trustees, that I successfully got into Schoology myself, and I submitted answers to questions. And of course, I always say, if I can do it, I feel like most everybody can do it, and yet I may need some additional tutoring before it's over. But I was delighted to see, in the Schoology platform, everything color-coded and directive as to what is the learning objective, what is the assignment, where do I turn in my work. Trustees, I was in the classroom for a very long time, 13 years, in what I wouldn't have given for a system that would help everyone, students and parents and everyone, to clearly understand where's the assignment. I mean, children won't be lost if they lose the paper because it's right there in the Schoology system. They can get the paper again. And if I think about all the years of middle school, trying to help students get home with their backpack and all the right papers and all the right books inside of the backpack, which is a major challenge for all of us, of course. But at any rate, the Schoology system, I'm delighted to report, is functioning beautifully, and our teachers who are training us have done a beautiful job of embedding universal design into the system, so that we are all getting a good start at thinking about not just what some learners need, but the kinds of tools, highlighting and color-coding. Those kinds of tools make it better for all learners, not just for students who may have learning challenges. So trustees, my goal was to complete in less than an hour this week by not going back through the entire learning plan, and we've achieved that goal. So thank you for your patience and for your tolerance. I appreciate that we're able to update on a regular basis, because we understand how important these updates really are. Thank you. President Johnson, we're ready for any questions.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate the consideration with the presentation and all the fine work that you've done. Trustees, are there any questions or comments? If you could use the hand, that would be great. Trustee Baskett?
Yes, so Dr. Swift, thank you. Thank you so much for this, and I agree, the shorter's better. But actually, we're focusing, it's like phases. We're focusing on the next phase. So I just wanted to, first of all, caution ourselves about some of the language we're using, and maybe there were asterisks and I missed it, but synchronous versus asynchronous. I don't know if every family will know what that is, even those of us where English is a first language. I never heard about it until this coronavirus, you know. So if you could clarify that before you post it on to the general public, what we mean by that, that would be helpful. And if you could also offer some assurance to parents that, I mean, this is a first time for all of us. And let me just say, personally, we have committed to doing one day of our child's school. We're splitting it amongst various adults. Now I'm nervous as heck because I don't want to fail the poor kid. And so now I'm thinking in my head, the checklist, did I miss things that I should already do? So, and I hate to put this on you, but if someone on the team could just do like a checklist, so you decided to do it this way, what should you have already done, and what still has to be done? So for example, we were not part of our child's email, the emails to the school list, but now that I think if we're going to handle her education, even for one day, we probably should get the email from the teacher or the administration, whoever sends that stuff. So checking that box, and I know, you know, for a lot of reasons, that should come from the custodial parent. So we have to talk to him about, you know, making sure that happens. And if there are any deadlines, so the checklist, the deadlines, and what if you miss the deadline, for example. We're not going to turn any child away who wants to be part of our school system who's already there, correct? So some assurance. And is there, so I'm worried about the Schoolology, I still can't say it, Schoolology?
Schoology, yes.
Okay. So again, now that I've made this commitment to this poor child, do I need to know more about Schoology before, in order to get her through the day, or is that something that only one parent needs to handle?
I really appreciate your great points. I was delighted on Monday to be on A2 Virtual's website, and I noted, and I think I know who the bright person was who did it, that they actually had put the dictionary definition of synchronous and asynchronous on their front page. And I appreciate, trustee, we're going to steal that idea. I should have used the words, it's real-time live interaction versus, you know, having the information but not having the real-time connection with the teacher. So we will be more clear about that. Thank you. It is the first time for all of us, and I have to share that I had to ask for extra help yesterday with Schoology, and yet I knew everyone in the session would be watching to see if the superintendent was able to get on there. So I didn't want to disappoint, but I did have to phone in for a little extra help to So I didn't want to disappoint, but I did have to phone in for a little extra help to get there. So we will have lots of extra help, we will have our help desk open from seven thirty in the morning to seven thirty in the evening for the first few weeks of school. Um, Ms. Bacalor and I were talking yesterday, and I know the team will be excited. We are gonna produce checklist so that parents can kind of work through their checklist and know that they're ready to go. We will be providing parent orientation sessions. And we'll do those both synchronously live, but we'll also do those in video format because some folks prefer them that way. Um, so we will be providing those orientation sessions. Um, and you know what, we will make sure that the child gets on. So parents should not stress about this, we will work through the process. That's why that first week is short shortened days. So that in the mornings, we'll have an abbreviated schedule. And then in the afternoons, we can troubleshoot if there've been any any problems at all. So thank you, trustee.
No, thank you. That that really makes me feel a little better. And uh, again, you know, to our community, thank you for the support. I mean, without the community's support over the years, we wouldn't be where we are here. Um, we will get through this, we will get through this. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Lazarus?
Thank you very much, President Johnson. Um, thank you, Dr. Swift, for that great update. Um, I know that there's a hundred and one things that you have to do in the same day, all at the same time. Um, this is uncharted territory, obviously. But I want to ask the question about the legislative, I just had it up here and then I moved it. The legislative waiver for seat time. Um, and one of the things that I've been hearing from parents is that they uh like the virtual option, that we are virtual, but they don't like the fact that they have to get their kid on a specific time and, you know, at a specific time during the various day.
Yeah.
Um, is there a way that we're looking at possibly giving parents more flexibility of how they act, their child actually gets counted for that day of attendance? Can you explain that a little more?
Well, um, what we will do, trustee Lazarus, and I really appreciate you asking that question, is we'll work with families on a case by case basis. But we do, after Monday's vote, we do have more flexibility to do that. Um, but we would want to just do that particularly for elementary. We want to do that with the teacher and the principal and those that are closest to the child. And I guess I would suggest for parents, if if they don't ever want to be uh real time and live, then they really should go the A two virtual route. If they want to be interactive, but they would like to curtail some parts of the day or some parts of the week, that would be something to talk to your teacher and your principal about. We can work with that.
So just to follow up on that, um, just so that the public understands how we as a district count students, we count them visually, correct? Not virtually, meaning that they log on, we actually, the teacher actually has to see their face, correct?
Well, we're still
Log on.
We're still working through the letter of the of the legislation. So I I don't want to get into, but I I can, because I, we're still sorting all of that out. But I will say that the threshold for counting on A two virtual does not require the live interaction every day. Uh, does not. Whereas um for the classroom, there are requirements. And I, it's hard to speak specifically because we're still sorting through um the many pages of this of the legislation.
Okay, I I didn't think that you'd have all the answers quite yet, because that just happened. So that's fine. This is more of just a comment. I really appreciate the the um, the wonderful support of the community for our district to literally um break down the digital divide. Um, through the technology bond, we've been able to make sure that every single child in every household has access to high speed internet access so that they can come to the school, which is on their computer now, and actually have a quality education. And not every district can say that. So I'm very happy that we have a very supportive community that allows us to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm very grateful to our community also.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you. Um, like the other trustees, my gratitude for this work just runs so deep. And and I just want to to commend you and your team um on on what you've put together. And then also in the same breath, apologize because every time you bring us more information and better plans, we just throw more questions at you. So
No, that's good.
Um, tonight will be no different. I I am taking a buckshot approach to my questions. They're all over the place. Um, but they do relate to the information you just gave us. Um, the the first question I have is whether we have confirmed that the expected amount of synchronous learning for a student can be supported by the amount of hotspot data we are able to give. Um, and and not just our hotspots, but also whether that amount of data is supported by the average family's internet service. Um, I know a a number of people who were surprised this spring and and some over the the summer learning sessions um that started to get warnings about um internet data from from Comcast or whoever their provider is uh that they had never seen before. And and I'm I'm just wanting to make sure we don't have an unexpected surprise of data limit getting in the way of of schooling come September.
I appreciate that question. I will follow up with Dr. Kelstrom. I know in trustees, you remember this part, I'm sure. They were beta testing those hotspots in the spring. But the difference was we were not synchronous, we were not live. So I know when summer session came, and I know some of you had children or others close to you in those summer sessions, there was a significantly higher rate of connectivity needed. So I will wrap back with an answer to that. I know they are extrapolating that data and connecting it to this, either the Comcast package or the um hotspot Kaji or the Verizon hotspot. But it, knowing Dr. Kelstrom, we need to also, and I'm sure she's ready to do it, is to advise parents on what that demand can be. And particularly if a child is in AP classes and, oh, I remember the one last spring, trustees, the child that was in video uh film class. Um, and it was an AP or IB class, and it required a lot of watching of film. And um, and I also know sometimes the lower elementary grades have quite a lot of uh games, number games, et cetera, that use data. So um, I will wrap back on that question.
Yeah, fantastic. I appreciate that. I'm just thinking of, you know, your average family with a a couple of kids, synchronous learning, or a couple of adults trying to work from home with their video conferencing. Um, I don't know that that Comcast ever expected to support us in that way. So having having a heads up on that, I think would be great for everybody. Um, my next question is about the benchmark assessment. Now, I understand this is very new and we may not have all the answers yet. Um, but I'm curious if they've given any guidance on which assessment and how it will be proctored. Um, because I'm wondering um it, if it's if it's a thing that can only be done in person, are we then running into concerns that families who've already told us they are not interested in coming back for schooling will not be coming back for assessments, putting us in jeopardy in terms of our um compliance numbers?
Thank you for that question. It's almost as if you sat on our team. These are exactly the questions that we're asking. Um, I just received some help from one of my uh partners in Cabinet who is sharing uh back trustee Lazarus that the um the legislation has not been detailed in draft, in implementation form. But uh, that's regarding attendance, but regarding the assessments, there are some things noted. We do intend to administer assessments virtually. Um, and we do have the ability to do that. It will be a a first time, back to trustee Baskett's um phrase earlier, it will be our first time to do it this way. Um, but we intend to do it virtually. We want to show our commitment, and so we are working on how that can occur. I promise to bring you more updates on this area as well.
Sure. Great, thank you. Um, next one, um instructional minutes. Um, I know probably especially for high schools, this is a departure from the way high schools were doing it, whether with an IB program or a seventh hour or, you know, trimesters, it's different for everybody. Um, I, and I know the state has to approve what we're doing, so I'm not concerned about being in compliance with the law in terms of instructional hours. But I do have um questions around what the number of instructional minutes and number of courses available in a schedule means, especially for our upperclassmen who maybe have certain things they need to take to graduate.
Yes.
Um, are are we finding that to be a broad based concern? Or are we finding that it's so few students impacted by these instructional minute changes that it's something they can work out with their counselors?
We are actually delivering a full high school schedule. So our high school students will get their full schedule. Now, they will have a a time in the block that's with the teacher synchronous. And then there will be a break or an activity or an assignment time. I don't want folks to think they're going to be tied to their laptop the entire day. And in fact, uh, we'll be, uh, Mr. DeAngelo shares in full compliance with IB uh with the two hundred and sixty minutes per week that are required. And uh, we're actually, it is a full high school day. Um, I do want to share though, for parents of middle school and high schoolers that are concerned that they need a a more flexible day. Uh, one is that A two virtual does give complete flexibility. The other is we have always addressed middle schoolers and high schoolers who, for whatever reason, physical health or social, emotional, mental health concerns, we have always addressed abbreviated schedules when needed. So I don't want folks to think that uh just because the day is full for high school in order to meet all of the standards that are expected, um, it does not mean that that some students won't have an opportunity for a customized schedule. That happens all the time, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your presentation um addressed some questions I had about the provision of special ed services. So I'm really glad to know that you're working with leadership in some specialty areas there and have a forward to the next updates on on how that planning comes along. And then my last question, um, it it came up during slide twenty nine, and you don't have to flip back to it, but it's that day where we looked, uh, where we we looked at Wednesdays for high schoolers. And it it lists learning block one, learning block two, learning block three, right down the day in about uh like forty five minute increments. Did those learning blocks refer to the same learning blocks on A and B days? Or does that refer to a learning block of enrichment or or rec and ed offerings that are Wednesday specific?
Uh, that is a great question, and uh Paul DeAngelo's, it's all blocks. I need some help with this one, so Ms. Lyndon.
I'm glad it's not just me.
On Wednesday at high school, Ms. Lyndon, they go to all blocks? But it's asynchronous, is my understanding. So they have an assignment or an activity in every class. There she is, Ms. Lyndon. Thank you.
Hello, thank you so much. It's a great question. I'm glad you're clarifying this. So Wednesdays, they're seeing all six of the blocks they are scheduled for. So on Mondays and Tuesdays, they're alternating three blocks, three blocks. But on Wednesdays, they have all six blocks. And they are asynchronous lessons to allow students that flexibility to go in and out, do that work independently at a time that works best for them.
In fact, Ms. Lyndon, and I see it's the same at middle school. In fact, Ms. Lyndon, if they wanted to do that on a late Tuesday afternoon, just just wipe out all those assignments or activities or readings or whatever they are, then they could just have a completely available day on Wednesday to do rec and ed or to um, to do whatever they needed to, correct?
Uh, possibly, dependent when teachers have those lessons prepared and can load them. At the very last, uh, possible, we want them available in the morning prior to the start of a traditional school day. But if they're loaded up and and staff is ready beforehand, certainly they can access those as soon as they are loaded.
So at secondary, those are really extensions of the learning that's occurring on Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. So it fits right in with what they're doing. They're just gonna go off and do this thing on their own time.
That is correct.
Okay, and so you learn something new every day. I I learned that today. Um, when we've been talking about Wednesdays as a day where folks can participate in rec and ed or enrichment or or clubs, then we're really talking about the elementary schoolers only because those big kids are gonna have a full day, just hitting seven, six or seven blocks in succession.
I want to be clear that this, in seeing the schedule, looks a little different for me too, trustee.
Okay.
So you're not the only one that has this feeling. I didn't see them necessarily laid out in a schedule. And my guess is some enterprising educator um felt that that was a good way to lay that out. I have felt that it was more loose than that. Um, Ms. Lyndon, I I I think it's all wonderful. I just, is there, was that just to help students to see how they might map out their day? Or uh, because they're certainly not going through every block, right?
It is, there are lessons posted for all six blocks that day, activities for them to do to strengthen their learning and their understanding. Uh, the intention is not to overload students on a Wednesday, though. The intention is exactly to provide them with flexibility. So they could take an afternoon, do some additional activities, maybe come back to one of the blocks later on in the evening and do whatever activity is posted there. Those blocks are shorter than the traditional blocks on Mondays and Tuesdays, so they're they're meant to be shorter. Check-ins, reinforcements of the learning. So really, the intention is to provide flexibility.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. I'm I'm sure that there'll be as much, you know, personalized planning through each teacher as there is in real life too. So it's hard for us to sit here and say what it will be like for thousands of students because we know how great our teachers are at really meeting their community of students and and developing works for them. So I'm glad we have that as a place for our teachers, and I'm I'm sure the community will be eagerly observing more details as it comes out. So again, thank you so much for for how much you've put into this. Thank you for handling my random assortment of questions, and and I'm um all set here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, I couldn't see the slide perfectly, but Ms. Lyndon, having a a footnote that just, I bet there's a footnote there that reminds families that that is an entirely asynchronous day. So students may, their blocks might run in the morning or in the evening or however they choose to do it, correct?
Correct, and we can work to clarify that. So we do appreciate that feedback tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, trustees, any other questions? Right, so I have a couple of questions. Um, the first question is uh is about the computer distribution. I've had, I've had this question asked of me. So when, for those students who who currently have technology, they will turn in their their old technology, get new technology that they'll they'll keep for the year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, excellent. And then um, and then my other question was about these these buses with the with the wifi on them. So is the idea that that those buses would go into neighborhoods during the 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 school hours? Is like, how would, how would that actually work?
Actually, the ones I've seen across the country, um, Actually, the ones I've seen across the country, they're just parked there. And usually in some parking lot where they have to have electricity, so, you know. But they typically are just left there so that students are able to do their homework and do their interactive schoolwork. And I know that when we bring this to finance committee properly first or whatever, we're trying them one at, it's not a very great cost, I think about $5,000. And Dr. Kelstrom wants to try that. And then if it is successful, then we'll bring to finance and start an endeavor to do many. But other districts that have done them, it might be parked in an area near the neighborhood. And I don't know if they move them, but it's there for people to use.
Got it. Okay, excellent. Well, thank you. Seeing no other questions, we do appreciate that information item.